Last time we met discussing this topics, we went through articles one, two, and three. Kind of a high end review of those, those articles provided the presentation asked if you answered a few questions related to that. So Bob is here this evening to go through articles four, five, and six. And answer any questions you may have. Anne is also available to help some of the questions that you may have. And Jen and myself are also available. So Bob, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Ryan, and good evening commissioners, staff, and public. I suppose I should share my screen. So bear with me. Oh, I need to be enabled. To be able to do that.
I was on my way to do that.
All right, here we go. Okay, let me start slideshow. Since we already gave the overview, let's see. Since we, where's the slideshow thing? Oh, here we go from beginning. Since we gave the overview back in February and then I believe Anne led the The March meeting where you went through articles one through three, I'm going to jump just right into this. And we've got some stopping points after A number of sections that I've integrated into the slideshow. So some slides, if they're somewhat new, I'll add some details, other ones, I'll just Sort of give you a quick refresher. So we'll just go right into this. So the block frontage standards which get into what the How the private development fronts onto the street. There's a number of sections here. This is just a overview of the, there's, there's several Different sections here and that I'm going to jump right into. So again, you've, you've probably seen, hopefully you've looked at this in detail. Because this is probably one of the more important aspects of code that really helps to frame and The future form, it's sort of the heart of the form based code. Because it really gives you an opportunity to focus the development where you want to, where you want it to be strict. And have storefronts in certain areas and where you think areas that warrant more flexibility. Have that flexibility. So in this case, the storefronts obviously are where we're zooming in. Requiring storefronts with future development. Recognizing that this is only going to occur as redevelopment occurs. So when the property owners decide to Embark on a project, then they would need to do a storefront on these red streets. And then you see we've got the landscaped in the green, which requires a modest landscape setback. So it wouldn't allow the storefront. And then the mixed is sort of, you could do either. And I'll get into the other types in a minute here, so.
I'm not seeing what you're seeing on the screen.
Oh, I need to.
Started from the beginning, Bob.
I think I was on, I need to swap the view.
Correct.
Sorry about that.
That looks beautiful.
You've got a list here, so hopefully you're seeing what I'm seeing. Okay. So this is just a listing of the various sections of the block frontage standards. So I'm just going to whiz through these. Since I get into them. And here's just the summary chart that looks at all the key Block frontage designations and then of course the map. So I'm going to walk through these Type, block frontage type by type here. And but before I do that, there's just, we try to do some clarifications. For instance, there's transparency standards. For the amount of windows on the facades for the different Block frontage types. And so this page gets into those details and kind of defines how they're measured. So staff and the applicants know exactly how much, you know, where does this apply? How much do you need? And then also just making sure that you don't end up with those frosted glass windows that Function more like a wall. So again, storefronts are your most intensive frontage here and we worked with The team and staff to and looked at the previous, the existing plan. The public process on this to try to figure out how we should, where we should designate storefronts, if any. In town. So the graphic here illustrates the storefront and we've got minimum Floor to ceiling heights for the inside of the space as well as transparency standards, weather protection standards. Height for the weather protection features and of course entries facing the street. And there's some of your examples. So the locations for these. I'm going to move myself so I can see the map better here. The locations for these, we've clustered into three different spots include 270th place. Up against Kohl's and 172nd, you sort of on the south side, you already have sort of beginnings of Of this, but this is really trying to create a node of pedestrian activity in the future as things evolve in downtown Covington. The two other ones, the, the town center area at the former school site. Which it sounds like that's been completely, I haven't been there, but I saw the image from the last slideshow that it's pretty much gone now. So it tries to focus a nice block of Main Street there off of Wax Road. And then the other ones in front of the current Safeway between Kent Kangley, 272nd. Again, if, if and when redevelopment occurs, it's trying to make a node there and have a storefront area. The other one again is the landscape block frontages is where you would require a landscape setback and don't allow the storefront. And so the graphics there and the photos show examples and provisions there. And, and then the mixed in the purple would be where you could do either or. It really allows more of the choices. And the key to both of, the key to all of these, so parking location is a critical deal for all of these. And for storefronts, we're saying that there's no parking adjacent to the street on the storefront areas. That's why the, those are the most strict and you want to be the most cautious and careful where you locate those. With these mixed and the landscape designations, what we say is that the parking can be on the side Or the rear of buildings. And if you have a big site with multiple buildings, what we say is no more than half Of the frontage can be parking, recognizing that there's going to be cars For a long time in downtown Covington and people are going to mostly come here to drive. We need to be reasonable and provide some parking. But to try to transition it towards more of a pedestrian environment, we sort of go with the 50/50 rule there. And again, here's the map and show you can see the distribution. Hopefully you had a chance Between the first two presentations to sort of absorb this and, and think about how it would work in the future. Because we really looked at this strategically, looking at each development, each area, what the opportunities were. You know, trying to emphasize some streets, recognizing flexibility is needing it on other streets. And then of course, in the draft code has, there are a lot of more details that I'm not going to get into here, but you can feel free to ask any questions And comments on that stuff. And the other part is departures. We went over the departure concept at the February meeting. So many of these standards, they're, they're clear minimum standards, but in some of these, we offer The departure opportunity. And so if you're looking at the draft, you'll see this little symbol with an arrow. And that indicates that you can voluntarily depart from some of these, provide you meet the intent of the standards. And then after, there's some departure criteria under each of the block frontage types that help guide how, how The decision maker will evaluate projects of whether or not they meet. And what we try to do with these is, is give the city some tools to basically allow the good projects and And deny ones that just don't meet the intent. But we try to give you the, the tools to be able to do that and make it clear, not vague. So the other key designation is along Kent Kangley. And I believe one other short street near the Fred Meyer. And this is what we call the gateway block frontage. We figured we needed some other halfway in between designation. And what the focus here is, is to focus the energy on the intersections and try to get the buildings close to them. So Because those are where more of the pedestrians might be concentrated. And, and then let those super blocks between the intersections be more of where your parking is and be more flexible. So the idea is you essentially comply with the mixed standards at the intersections. And then it's, it's more of the undesignedated or the basic standards between. And so that's where you can have your surface parking. So that the photo on the right is, is an image I found from Hillsboro, Oregon. That perfectly kind of illustrated what we're talking about. Then the, the unmarked streets on the map, which we're calling basic block frontages. Are, are streets where just warrant more flexibility. Or like these, the subdivisions here where right now they're just residential. And so here we don't dictate the parking lot location standards. There's still some standards regarding the entry. You want an entry visible from the street. You want some transparency and the transparency depends on You know, if you locate the building up close to the street, you know, you need to provide a lot of transparency, but if you set it back, then your things are more flexible. Then also Anne probably talked about the through block connections at the last meeting. And I know I did in the February meeting where we are in certain super blocks here, we're trying to integrate with development, new pathways like the Upper images there. And we provide different options for the design. They could be a landscape pathway like the ones at the top, or they could be more like a shared pathway. Like the example at the bottom. So to go with those, if you, if you, if the developers build One of the examples on the top, the landscape passageway, then they would need to comply. The, the building portions next to them would need to comply with the Wooner And last landscape passageway frontage standards. And it, it gets into setbacks, transparency. It's trying to create a good environment for those trails. And again, these are, so the, if you see my cursor, these dashed Orangeish lines here going through the town center site or behind the medical office complex In the woods. And paralleling or extending off 172nd towards Wax Road and also connecting to the The Creek Trail, Jenkins Creek, the planned Jenkins Creek Trail. Then the other one, we also include an option for more of these European style downtown passageways. And so if you, if you build one like that, you have more like a storefront type of standard. Although this is a little bit more flexible than the storefront standard and you can actually do Have ground, I believe you can have some ground floor residential on it, provided you meet certain standards. So the, these are a variety of images. Old and new and onshore. Or here in North America and then in Europe too. Another important thing we've added here is ground floor residential frontage standards. So And what's really important is when, you know, when you get, get multifamily buildings like this closer to the street. Particularly when they get below 15 feet, particularly below 10 feet, adding provisions for privacy. In streetscape get a lot more critical. So this sets some standards for, you know, if you move it closer, you need to elevate the ground floor. And elevate the windows. You've got a little more privacy. And the photo examples below shows examples of how you might do that and have a building close, but yet meet it. And then we show what not to do. You know, we've seen a lot of examples that, that, that could be better. So these are in the Redmond's Overlake, former hospital site that's been developed. And the development does a lot of things nice, but you know, some of these streetscapes With a one foot setback and the residential uses, at least they, they raise the ground level, but the The setback is pretty close and the, the gray walls are a little bit harsh. So oftentimes it's good just to show what's unacceptable to give a clear communication message, message to This is the decision makers and applicants and the community. And then there's other clarifying provisions about, you know, what happens when you're on two streets and how does it work? So we've got some standards that deal clarify that. And then the other thing is key corners, you want to articulate. So we've identified a number of these high visibility street corners. And then we've got standards to say, well, Here's some ways that you can articulate your building or your site at the street corner. So we've got a number of variety of examples there. And we provide other option that maybe they don't quite meet the top six. So, okay, so that, oh, here you can see And most of those are lined up along Kent Kangley at key intersections because those are so important. And really the only other ones are In the town center at off of Wax Road and around the storefront area there. And also at Wax Road and Covington Way is that's a big Big intersection, obviously. So I'll stop there and see, hopefully there's some questions and comments, then things that I could maybe answer.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions that they'd like to ask? We'll start with Kathy.
Yeah, I have a question. You talked about storefronts and overhangs and rain. And I'll use the current Safeway as a example. If you park and I don't know if you're familiar with the Safeway, but if you, for example, go into Rite Aid or go into Hallmark. There is a covered area to walk if it's raining. But then if you want to go into Safeway, you have to go out into the rain to go into the Safeway. Which to me makes no sense. And if you're going to build, here's another one for you. The Covington Library, the way they built the overhang. You can be under overhang and then to get into the library, you have to walk. And there's no overhang and then you get rained on or dripped on from the overhang and then you walk in the library. And to me, those kinds of things make no sense. They may look pretty, but when it's raining. I'm not going to hang around and walk around and get wet. I may want to go to from shop to shop to shop, but I'm not. So.
Sure. Good, good. So in the storefront areas Where you've got the most pedestrians, this is where we say at least six feet deep along 75% of the facade. You know, we would say 100, but really when you, when you require 100%, it really starts limiting what you could do with the architecture. Generally, if you got 75%, that's pretty good. And you know, there's some gaps that you can run. Or there's enough coverage there that, that it's really useful. And it allows you enough diversity to mix things up architecturally. So that's kind of the approach there. On the other frontages, you might have setback buildings. And so along the sidewalks there, unless they do a storefront, you're not going to have any Weather protection along the sidewalk, but we require protection over the entries. And so if you have a common Entry, it requires deeper, I think we require five foot deeper, deep weather protection. And over, of course, individual residential entry. So if you build townhomes, for instance. Each residential entry has got to have a weather protection, at least three feet deep. So, but really I think it's for this, for the Safeway situation, we're saying six feet wide, 75%.
Yeah. The other thing also on your, you called it 50/50 parking. I live seven minutes away from Covington. So there's no way I'm walking, especially the street I have to drive on. There's no way I'm walking. There's no way I'm riding a bike. You know, if you're going to, as I do, Safeway, Fred Meyer and Costco on a one fell swoop. You're going to move your car every time. So If, if there's going to be a situation, and I'll just say that if, if the Costco parking lot is really full, I don't go. I drive away. I'm not going to drive around and drive around and drive around and hunt down a spot. So then that day Costco doesn't get my money. They may get my money another day, but for me, that's true anywhere, any, any parking lot I go to. If I have to hunt down a parking spot, I'll leave. So I, I hope you have enough parking.
Yeah, the, I know that the parking standards, I believe I'll get into that later here. We've made some adjustments to it, but I don't believe that many. You have some. I know you have some maximums right now, which I believe, I think are 50% of the minimums or 150% of the minimums. Tried not to mess with that too much again, because we know that it's a suburban community. Most people drive. In a lot of these cases, the When you build these projects, the You know, we, it's a, the, just to get financing, you're going to have to have parking. And if you're going to have a, if you want a successful business, you're going to have to provide some parking in Covington. That's just the way it is. At the same time, there's, you know, things are You know, as there's no more room for, or not much more room for single family development, a lot of your new population are going to be People in townhomes and apartments and more dense housing types. So there's What this tries to set up is a greater opportunity that, you know, people will drive, but The start will be more people will walk because maybe they're close and it's less of a hassle to get in their car than it is to actually just walk From their apartment to these places. So we're trying to, you know, bridge that gap of making it work for, for both During this time where The city's having a bit of transition here.
So can I?
Thank you.
This is Anne. Can I just, so Kathy, I'm taking notes and I hear your concern. So I think it's something we can go Look at and have a discussion with makers about and see what's out there. Because I do appreciate that. And Bob, I do, we need to go back and do a checkup. Because I don't think the graphic matches what I'm looking at in the code actually has a different percentage, just so. So we'll go double.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the draft code I'm looking at says 80%. So we'll, we'll figure, we'll make sure.
Oh, good, thanks.
So Kathy, we definitely hear you about that and.
We've made, I know we've made a, there, there were a couple of places where we found, we found that because some community, you know, we use the graphic Over and some communities go for different percentages.
One of the things I thought was that what this is, that is one of the standards, weather protection that we allow for deviation. So we'll have a conversation if, especially if other commissioners agree that maybe we can Do something where we make it a little higher, but it's, they can get a deviation for reasons. So But I, we'll, we'll check up what's, what, where, maybe it's supposed to be 75% in the code and it's not, but I just was pulling that up. So I definitely will take comments about, we'll, we'll write down your comments Kathy. And if anyone else has stuff, just so we can go back as a staff and, and with our consultant team and talk about that too.
I agree with Kathy. This is Jennifer.
Okay, all right. I just, you guys will get to make comments at the public hearing, but just if you want to, we're hearing this now, so.
Yeah. And I think if you wanted to go up, you know, I think going up to, if you wanted to go up to 80%. I would say 85 is when you start getting, you know, you could probably go there and you still allow some flexibility, but you start Limiting some of the architectural flexibility. But you know, you could go up a little higher. And regarding the width, you know, we've five feet minimum is kind of skimpy. Six feet, you could, it's more comfortably allows two people as we've seen the image there, walking under it. And here we say minimum, sometimes we've said five feet average minimum. Which allows flexibility to go less and more and allows for some variety there. You know, you could say six feet average or an average, six feet average minimum, but that's getting to be, you know, quite a bit. Quite a bit of width. So just, just kind of giving you an idea of the, how we've looked at that standard. And, and also the, the part of it is looking at On some of your streets where you have a 10 foot wide sidewalk, or maybe it's 12 when you, and you want to have trees there too. You, you kind of need to balance the, the ability to have a tree and your weather protection. So six feet Kind of hits a sweet spot there. I'm glad you're taking notes, Anne, because I'm, usually I type up notes while I'm on here, but I can't. Well, I'm on the presentation mode. And are you, are we looking, since I switched it, are we looking at the full slide or are we looking at the The presenter view? I can't tell which. Okay, good.
And what was I going to say? Yeah, I forgot it. But yeah, I'll, I'll take, we'll take notes about that. And Kathy, the other thing to remember though, is that the frontage of the Safeway isn't a street. So it would be an interior frontage. So that's something for us also to talk about. You know, public buildings and storefrontages that don't, hopefully in the future, we would have them on a street, but That we'll make sure we check in on that, just emphasizing that we are the Northwest and weather protection is important. So.
I've just, has there been any reaction to this map and the locations and the strategies here? I'd be really curious. Do you think we got this right? You know, are there, do we have too much red? Is, is, are there some other look, are they in the wrong spots? If there's any comments like that, that would be good to know. If, if we think that You know, we try to, some communities just go crazy and they want storefronts everywhere. And I try to tell them. You know, you have to be really careful with this stuff because you're, especially with the new Post pandemic commercial landscape, it's hard to, it's hard to leave space, but you want to You also want to protect the ability to have, you know, these pedestrian oriented commercial spaces. And, and so the idea is with the form based code is to make sure that we're building in spaces that are adaptable As things change. So we're, we're So we're trying to create enough storefront, commercial spaces. And then with the purple allows the flexibility. And the other nice thing about that is that Even if the retail market isn't strong, you might have a developer that fronts on these purple streets. Choose to do a storefront just because they can, they can use the whole site and build the building there and they get more square footage. And so that may help the community get more space and may help, may help you get more affordable commercial space, which is Can be hard to come by and communities really want To be able to get a greater variety of ground floor commercial uses. I know it's a big deal and Lots of other communities, especially communities are becoming more ethnically, ethnically diverse. Any, any comments?
Could you bring up the bigger map showing more of the city with the colors again?
Sure. Here we go.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to look at it again for a few minutes.
You know, I've looked at it several times and I'll tell you, the vision of this is appropriate. And I think it's a pretty representative view of the way I'd like the city to be laid out. So From what I can see, I feel it's a great start. Let's put it that way.
Thank you. Good.
I have one question that comes to mind looking at it, which is 168th place. It's gateway until it gets to 274th street and then it becomes basic. Is that, is that correct?
That's a good question. We, I think we didn't designate it just because of the The nature of the area around it, but maybe that's not the right approach. I could see it.
So sorry.
Especially if it.
Street, what, are you talking about the part that goes in front of Costco? So that.
Yeah.
Fred Meyer.
Fred Meyer and, and.
I think he's right. Is that there's a bunch of storm drainages there like a
Oh, yes.
And so I, I just, we, that's built. I think the hospital or the multi, is that multi, which one is that? That's Valley Medical, right?
Valley Medical, yeah, that's probably not changing for a while. So homes here.
Yes. I mean, there could be something going in there, but I think that's where we put that we're not, that could be, if there's nothing there. They sort of get to, they'll, they'll pick one of these. But because we don't know what's happening or the, and, and isn't that's also where Um, but because we don't know what's happening or the, and, and isn't that's also where the big, um, power lines go along that north side there.
Correct, correct. So that's, I guess that's why I'm just kind of remembering why we did that.
And I don't personally think, I think through the next thirty years, we're probably going to have Costco there. They.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I think what might happen is that, um, Covington first, something could happen there. They could consolidate. You know, eight or nine, ten lots and buy something, but, um. Well, I think we'll wait and see what comes up there and then we will work with them. Something will happen there.
What I was, what I was thinking about there is, you know, the Fred Meyers, they've got another Fred Meyer in Maple Valley. So. You know, on that one there in Covington's getting pretty long in the tooth. They've remodeled it a couple of times and it's already wearing out. So. It seems like there might be opportunity there in the future, but who knows? So it just concerned me that it was, that it was essentially undesigned.
Well, the beauty of this approach is. You know, we could try this out and probably what you want to do is revisit it every couple of years. To see how it's working and do we need to tweak anything? Especially as things come up and. You know, you might be surprised sometimes the properties that. Uh, get redeveloped. Sometimes you're like, why hasn't this? Site developed and then other times like, wow, I can't imagine. It's such a surprise that they're tearing down that building and putting in another bigger thing in. So, um. You can revisit it and I, I encourage, uh, just evaluating how the code is, is working every couple of years. So.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Questions from commissioners? Joe, you look like you have a question. Oh, and you're on mute.
Uh, I'm ready to go and.
Okay, already.
I've got another quick question. If I could. Um, it's two seventieth. That runs. Um. It's, let's see, it would be behind the Chick-fil-A.
Yeah.
There is a. The road is blocked there where the daycare is. This implies that that's going to go through. Is that true?
I, I can speak to that. We, we did check with our, um, public works director, Don Laudren. And he said, yes, that should still be there, that it's a long range plan that at some date. When, if, if and when that property came available, that they do want to do a connection through there. Um, and. They've looked at the alignment. So yeah, it's a. It is something that they want to have on there for the future.
That is a project near and dear to my heart. I look forward to that.
Yeah, I avoid that whenever possible.
Yes, absolutely. And it would be so nice to have that street go through.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's why it's in a dash.
Yeah, I, I look forward to it being a solid line. The sooner the better.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Jennifer.
Um, I'm wondering why, I think it's two seventy fifth. It's that, uh. Think, isn't that? I think that's the one by, um, LA Fitness, right? Down, yeah, that one. Yeah, what's going on with that one?
So we didn't designate that, uh, largely because of all the. The streets. The trees, the parking lots here. Um. And I can't remember what was going on with this site. There, but.
Homes that I think could be commercial in the future.
Yeah. So for some reason or the other, I think we, because of these other streets being designated in the curve. And also the, the, the. Obviously this is brand new with the, the senior development there. Um.
So Bob, could you just maybe go over again, what, if there's no line, it means it's basic and what does that mean? Cause, um.
Yes, thanks.
Yeah.
So that just means. That means it's the most flexible. So there's no strict parking lot location standards. You could put. You know, you could put a parking lot i- in front of your building there, uh, and that would be okay. As long as you met the landscaping standards and you met. You know, your, uh, building design standards and all that. So there's just more flexibility and. You know, what we try to think about here is we already got. This is putting more energy on Wax Road for those properties. Um, although you do have. You know, the corner there, the northeast corner of one seventy. Second and two seventy fifth. So I guess one thing that you could do is you could extend. Um, you know, if you're concerned about that. You know, you could extend the purple all the way down to two seventy fifth. You could do that, or you could extend the purple. To sort of connect with the, uh, through block connection. So at least you get, um. The develop that northeast corner there to sort of front on the road if that develops. Someday, if you develop the LA Fitness parking lot. Uh, and. Put a parking garage or whatever you're going to do there. Um, so there's some options. That's a good, good street to bring up. And to think about. So it was sort of just, we were folk, trying to focus our energies and at, at some point, um. Felt some has to give, but, um. We'll, I'll also say that, um, we had those provisions in here about. When you front on more than one street. I think it was this one. So when you front on multiple streets like this. And you have a lot of, um. Uh, you know, you have to put your parking lot somewhere. So if you, if you front on a street that has all these block, strict block frontages all around you. There are some provisions here that, that provides some flexibility and, and prioritize. You know, which frontages are most important. So we kind of recognize that problem and the challenge. So. What I'm trying to say is if you wanted to, I'm trying to get back to the map here. If you felt that was important to, you know, that maybe you. What I would probably do is extend the purple. If you think that's a priority. And, and you're concerned about it being basic. Make it purple.
Um, and just FYI, on that two seventy fifth. Street we're talking about there where it curves onto Wax Road, that triangular piece of property I believe is for sale.
Good to know.
Yeah.
That's a prime, that's a prime piece.
Yeah.
Especially if the town center.
Kathy, which piece are you talking about?
It's, it's right at the end of one seventy second where it curves and becomes two seventy fifth. Right next to the fifty five and over. Yeah, that triangular piece of property I believe has a for sale sign on it.
So we've had, we've had inquiries about a, uh, kidney dialysis. Uh, medical facility, uh, potentially going there. Uh, there's been other inquiries as well. So yes, that is for sale.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I think that's, that's a good catch, Jennifer. That's. It would be nice to have the purple there, I think.
Yeah, I guess that's how I feel, but at the same time, I, I guess Anne provides a good reminder that. You know, we don't necessarily need to have color everywhere, that there can be some, some basics too. So. I guess I just bring it up and yeah, I guess if others agree with me, then that's cool.
Yeah, that, that to me seems like kind of a key street. Um, a lot of people use that and, you know, having it, uh, come out onto. Landscaped and if they were to put a giant. Uh, front, front of the building parking lot there, I think that would be pretty unattractive. So, yeah. I, I have some concerns about that being basic.
Discussion.
Noted. If we will, we will write that down. That's good, good direction.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Okay, are we, are we assuming, uh, I like to know what are we assuming here about the whole Safeway? Rightway complex in there. That, uh, takes up such a major part of that section of the downtown area. Are we? Are we assuming that's all going to be for sale? It's going to be redeveloped by somebody else and all that stuff is going to come down? Uh, what do we anticipate is happening there?
Very good question. Um. We, like all these communities that have, that have these big shopping centers, we just, you just don't know. A lot of them have long leases and, and they're just going to be there a long time, but. It's good to sets to mark up your maps like this in case they change because. You know, and I, I live in Bellevue and there's a post office and you know, post offices. Can take an act of Congress to move, move those things sometimes, but. Boy, the land value got to be so high that suddenly it was. It's going to be, it's either been sold or going to be moved. And so. Just having some plans in place for if and when it, it goes. It's good to have. So. The other thing I'll bring up with this is, you know, one seventieth and with the back of the, um. Uh, what's the name of the, the, the big apartment complex and forgetting it? Right here. Well, this, this stretch, so you're. Polaris, that's right. So your, your current plan tries to focus, this is a storefront street and, um. So Polaris was built with this requirement to put in ground floor commercial space. Even though this connection wasn't here and you got woods across the street. And just there's going to be zero chance for retail to be successful there until it's kind of through. So that's why we colored this purple and not red. Because we think that. Up here is your better chance of doing it and we're sort of, you know, stuck at their mercy of it, when this is going to happen. And so that's why we're taking a more pragmatic approach. To this and, um. Putting the storefronts in the areas where we think they have a chance to be more successful. So. It'd be like if this was our only storefront and you have to wait till it's going to happen. We've got other. Kind of nodes that were, we think could happen sooner. So I think that's, that's why we did what we did here.
Okay, should we move on?
Okay, I'll keep going. So the next part here gets into site planning. And there's a whole host of sections here. I'll just jump right in. Um. This first one deals with, uh, the kind of the rear and side yard. Uh, situations. And if you, if you might remember in the density and dimensional standards where it talks about the minimum setbacks in the districts. For most of these zones, we point to this section and say there, well, the side and rear setbacks are from. Zero to fifteen feet and go see Article Five. The interior setback san- sandwich, uh, section. So it's sort of, uh, depends on. On what your design is. And so we say here. For many of these zones, so, uh, in the, in the GC, the MC and the TC zone. We say you could have a zero setback if you build a firewall. Um, and meet those building code standards. Um. And there's some fire codes, design standards that we have later to make sure that those are attractive. Or if you have a, uh, multifamily building and I'll. Show this in this next slide. If you have a multifamily building where you have a lot of units facing that side yard. We say you have to set it back fifteen feet. Because if you don't have a standard in, in, and like in Bellevue here. Uh, where you just have a five foot setback minimum. Uh, the builders will build these projects and you'll end up with. Buildings like this where you have only a five foot setback for each project. And then you're looking at ten feet between you and the neighbor and the next building. And you've just got hardly any. Opportunity for light air and access. So had they had that fifteen foot rule. You know, th- these units would have had more separation. But given, but we're also balancing sort of the property rights here. And so they could design it by doing a firewall. And they could use more of their property. So this approach sort of lets the owner. You know, design it in a way that they can get the square footage they need, but we're just trying to balance the livability aspects. Uh, for future residents in these buildings by, uh, trying to avoid this situation here. So five feet is just the standard, other, other setback. There. And then I think we've got some other provisions, um, here about. Um, the MHO, now I'm trying to remember what we said here. The, uh, clarify some setbacks. So when adjacent to the MHO zone. Or outside of downtown, there's a, a ten foot setback for development. Um, but. For the MHO zone, since, uh, some of those areas, we've got those, the subdivision and secret family zones. We've made an exception. If your lots less than a hundred feet width, you can have five foot setback because. That's just going to be. More reasonable for those small scale lots. Um, so this kind of explains, um. If you did a multifamily project, um, these, each of these would be different units. And so, uh, this building on the left here. They have, uh, solar act, the units here have solar access to the front and back. So they're only required to have a five foot setback, whereas this building on the right side. Has a building up front and it's got only a five foot setback because the unit's got solar access to the street setback. Uh, but these other units here. Their only windows are facing that side, so they would have a fifteen foot setback. So that's something we just suggest for all our projects like this are getting more, uh, urban. I think there's a question too.
Yes, I, I am maybe not knowledgeable enough about this topic. In terms of the fact that you're describing on the, on the prior slide. Window less firewalls. And I did not see any reference or definitions. In the documents that talk about, and I looked it up. I know what it is now, but I think that. We would really need to know about windowless firewalls and where they come into play.
Okay. And I think your, your building code should be able to. Uh, answer quite a bit of that too. But that's something we can, I'll talk with staff to figure out if there's any. Adjustments or clarifications there that are needed.
Ask David what he, is it that? So to reiterate, it's that you could do a, you can have zero. Foot setback in certain places. If it was a firewall and firewalls don't have, um. Windows, um, and we would require some sort of, um, artistic, I believe we had this, they have to do, it couldn't just be a cement wall that goes up.
Yeah.
So they, unless they had a, another development going next to it and we could. Confirm that was going to happen. So there's some. We want a mural or some sort of. Markings or something. But David, what do you need to know? Cause it is, it is a, um, a term of art for, um. The building code and it's very defined in there. Um. I'm curious, what additional information?
Well, normally the wind, the firewall is used for fire suppression or sound control. And it's assembly of materials like a wall put, placed in between. I don't necessarily. Would want to see firewalls in our, like our town center or in anywhere. I mean, to me it's. It's a purpose to. Give the maximum amount of square footage to the builder, the designer. And, and, and to me, it has no design benefits in form based. It doesn't fit. I don't, in my opinion, that's my opinion. It just doesn't fit. The form based code.
So I'm, I'm trying to think of a good example. Are you familiar with Old Town Bellevue? I mean, there's multiple ownerships there. And a lot, sometimes they actually, two different owners and they can build right up against each other. And so it's one continuous storefront area. But different ownerships and there's not a gap in between the walls. That's, so in certain locations. If you wanted this whole street of storefronts, you probably would want.
Yeah.
The bill to zero.
Any main, any historic main street has lots of, uh, lots of needs. Yeah.
Don't have any examples in Covington. I do want to acknowledge that I'm trying to, it would, yeah.
It'd change.
Yeah.
It'd be a change.
What we might want to see, so.
And I didn't see it in the definitions or reference. So I think we need to add that to our definitions.
Okay.
Page. And then once you do that, I'm okay with leaving it in here, even though I don't like the design aspects of it.
Great, good. I'll keep going here then. Uh, some other things are just like, if you build an apartment complex. Again, close to the property line and you have balconies, for instance. This is just saying, if you're within fifteen feet. Try to make at least fifty percent of the railing opaque, uh, for privacy sake. And switching over to, uh, open space. So we've got two sections, uh. And switching over to uh, open space. So we've got two sections, uh, one on public open space. And one on um, on multi-family uh, internal open space. So. What we've tried to do on this slide is just clarify the difference between your current code and the proposed new code. Because you do have some uh, requirements for development and TC and the MC zones. Um, the new code has requirements for, for all downtown zones on this. Um, but the applicable del- development standards are, are slightly different. So we try to clarify that. In the town center, we say it applies to all commercial and mixed use development that you have to meet this. Um, but if you're in the other zones, the MC, GC, MHO, we say that only if you have a bigger. Project basically that with more than ten thousand square feet of uh, commercial floor area for commercial mixed use. And then the percentage of open space. So currently it says. One point five percent of the gross floor area of the building itself. The new standard is two percent of the site. So it's a little bit more predictable uh, for the, you know, it's more. Unless, of course, you've got a building that covers the whole site, wall to wall and it's multiple floors, then. You would have to do more open space. So we, we thought that this balance of the two percent site area worked good. And then we've really updated the design standards for those, the quality of that public space. But the, the graphic here shows two examples of. Of a, of a development with surface parking, um, of how much that equates to in two different ways that you do it.
On that though, can I ask, you, you show in the table, ten thousand square feet of floor area. But in the graphics, it's ten thousand square feet of non-residential. Is that just further defined or is, are they two different standards?
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, I'd have to look at the, the actual code there and see if we. Cause here we say all mixed use commercial development with over ten thousand square feet. I'm not sure if this is just paraphrased. And maybe if, if, if I had Scott here with me, I'd have a look up the, the, the code to clarify. If you need ten thousand square feet of non-residential space in order for this to apply or not.
I, I do think that's what Makers proposed is before it would have, uh. You would have counted the residential space in there. Um, and now I believe what is being proposed is that. It doesn't include the residential um, space, but the residential will have to provide. Private recreational space, which they also had to do before. So it has taken out the residential as the proposals. You'd like to suggest something else? We can definitely look at that too, if you have concerns about that.
Yeah, so this is more for kind of the commercial side of things. And I've been working with, particularly with uh, Bothell. And um, a little bit of Kirkland with some of the public open space and downtown Bothell has been pretty. Aggressive at trying to get public open space with all development, including residential. And with residential, it's tough because it's hard to fit it on the site with the structured parking. And you know, in Bothell, their examples they've ended up with aren't really all that good. Cause they've had to kind of try to shoehorn it in and it, and it doesn't, because it's an apartment complex, it's like. There's um, it, it just doesn't work as well. It feels kind of forced and it's not, um, it's not ideal. So they're kind of. Questioning and I, I think it's, having that public space. Is more useful if it's just a park or if it's associated with kind of a mixed use environment retail. So from a urban design standpoint, that's kind of my take. And then, and then of course, we've updated the design standards themselves for. For the space to be successful in, in kind of getting into paving, um, the frontages. Amount of seating, weather protection and, and those types of things. And we've, those have been kind of refined over, as long as I've been doing this, sort of. Kind of been refining those uh, as I've kind of worked on projects and recognize what makes a good space good and what. Uh, prevents a bad space from being good. Any other comments on commercial or I'll just go into residential here? Uh, so residential, the um. Uh, well, the interim ordinance here uh, requires a hundred square feet per unit. The new proposal is, is adjusted a little bit. Um, so studio and one bedroom apartments, a hundred square feet per unit, but uh, two bedrooms or more, a hundred and fifty square feet. But then when you, when you do development, you add it all, all up and it's sort of cumulative. So it's not like the. The two bedroom unit has the separate space. Um, and then of course, the um, we, in the residential open space, we get in a little more detail. About the types of open space and the amounts. Um, so we try to encourage uh. Uh, you know, ground level spaces, rooftop areas, indoor recreation areas, uh, private. Uh, and even children's play areas, but um, the common open space is what you can do a hundred percent of. We provide opportunities for the other ones. Uh, but for instance, try to get more than just balconies. Another thing is just having some, again, good standards for the design. And particularly for the width of some of the spaces. So we've got some width standards that are based on the height of the building. So. Uh, we say if you're, you know, if your courtyard has five story buildings on both sides, it needs to be at least thirty feet wide for that to be usable. Less than that, it's just gonna be a canyon and uh, not a much more usable open space function. So we try to show a number of examples here of how, how to do that. And all, unless folks have a comment or raise their hands, I'll just keep going because we have a bunch, a lot of material here. So internal pedestrian access and design, uh, the provisions here are pretty standard, making sure that there's good connections. And um, Anne may have covered in the um, Article Three, the, the block standards. And also where you have the required through block connections. So these other internal connections or would be beyond those and making sure that you have a big parking lot. You have to have connections between them and you want to connect all the, um, all the businesses on each lot. And so we show a number of examples. Uh, service areas, mechanical equipment. Um, we looked at your current provisions and supplemented and strengthened them. To make sure that uh, those service elements is, are integrated, properly designed. Preferably in some mixed use buildings are integrated into the building. And not as an afterthought, so you don't end up with the situation like D, fronting your major sidewalk area with a big blank wall. Uh, rooftop is another one. So that's, we try to address rooftop uh, screening equipment there to make sure that's handled. Uh, in a proper way. And then uh, again, off-street parking, I touched upon a little bit earlier. And Scott Bonjukin in, in my office, um, he took a stab at most of this and iterated that. There's not a lot of big changes to the minimum requirements. They're already uh, pretty, pretty low. Uh, there were some adjustments to them. There's some maximum parking requirements and there's some slight adjustments to those. There's some flexibility to go uh, below or above with a parking study. And there's some added uh, or updated electrical vehicle standards and some, some new bike parking standards have been added. Uh, some supplemental landscaping provisions that have been updated. And a big thing here is um, a little more dynamic. Right now you have um. This chart explains it. Right now you have the impervious surface standard. And what we've replaced that with is this um, minimum landscape area standard. And it actually requires a little bit more, but there's flexibility on how you can meet that minimum. With that minimum, you could use uh, very, there's options for using uh, ground level landscaped area. Uh, but there's also options for doing green walls and green roofs. Um, and so what we've tried to do is bump up that number a little bit. Uh, to try to get developments to integrate enough greenery. And even if it has, it includes a green wall. Or, or a green roof and you get more credit for doing a better one. So, you know, if you just have a green roof that has cedum. And has an inch of soil, you know, you're gonna get this much credit. But if you do a green roof that. Supports bigger trees and shrubs, you're gonna get more credit for that. It's, it's something that we uh. Uh, created for Mercer Island a few years back and we've, we've um. There was interest in it here, so we've uh, adapted it to this situation. And I think, I think it'll help because. It'll, I think it'll be good to get some of that greenery. Uh, site lighting uh, is something that we added to. We've done some, Scott and I've done some pretty good uh, dark sky lighting. Planning in a number of communities and uh, Scott worked on some intensive standards. And so we put some. Provisions here just to enforce that look for livability and for, for dark sky supporting. And then we were also uh, there were some recommendations that we add, Septad, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Provisions in here. And this is something that we've, we've done for many communities. But I will say that a lot of these point to standards that are already in the design standards. In fact, I think there's this graphic and. The standards that are in there are just sort of a, they, they capture all of the different things that we can do. To make the site more safe and have good uh, visibility between the buildings and the streets and the sidewalks and the public spaces. So I'll stop here. Uh, the next one's building design standards, but uh, any other comments on any of this content?
Quick question for you. One of the slides mentioned like EV parking and, and bike parking. Is that integrated in, in special ways throughout the facility? Just kind of like you mentioned the add-on. Uh, I know you're a biker yourself, so I'm sure you thought about that, but like what is the. Planning for the site layout of those types of facilities?
For the site layout, I can't remember um, the details of that, other than um. I know it gets into the, the amount. Um, I'd have to, I'd have to. Look back at the details of the code and I can't open it right now.
Does that, I mean, sometimes you get a development, they're just, after the fact, have everything laid out and then throw five bike racks on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Building or?
It gets into the location uh, near the entry uh, and I believe it gets into security. Issues, a certain amount of coverage stays, so it, it, it goes there. It, I think it covers that, but I'll make note of that and, and. Take a look at it, talk with Scott after this. Thanks.
Karen, I have two questions if I could ask. Could I ask two questions, Mary? First one is regarding the crime prevention through environmental design, CPED. I, I really like that, but you didn't mention anything about the addition of security cameras or anything like that, that would help. The area to ensure safety and provide natural surve- surveillance, not natural surveillance, just surveillance.
Yeah, we don't, it doesn't get into that right now and frankly, I haven't. That hasn't come up uh, on a suggestion, but that's.
I just think that's kind of the way of the world, the way things are changing in terms of the respect that you need to have additional. Cameras to be able to visualize what's going on in the neighborhoods and, and areas where you've got a lot of people collected. So anyway, just that, that's a suggestion, I guess if it hasn't been addressed, I, it hasn't been addressed. The, the other question I have was regarding. The public spaces and, and, and you have it in the document, I think it's page one twenty. Where it said uh, for, for the public space areas adjacent, chain link fences are prohibited. And, and I'm just curious, because then it goes to the next session of the document and it talks about outdoor dining areas. And, and how they're gonna do security. How are you gonna do security and have those type of areas segregated? Without having some type of a chain link area going out into the exterior of the, of the, of the. Organization that's delivering like foods or whatever for a restaurant. I, I just don't, and I, and I think that. That black chain link fences that are done, that are nice ones. Don't detract from the area's design. And I don't know if any, I mean, just to say, we will not accept. Chain link fences kind of, was kind of surprising.
Are, are you talking about maybe like a sports court?
Well, it could be maybe a sports court, but I mean, it could be outdoor dining areas. It could be providing some type of security. To make sure that certain people can go in that particular area.
Well, I think the dining section where we're encouraging outdoor. Uh, we're encouraging the buildings to, to have spaces that spill out onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, shall be.
You know, usually they.
Is what it says.
Usually they have a fence around it, but they're, they're typically uh, masonry or they're, I. I'm not used to seeing chain link being used on a kind of a street skate.
If you think of like Kent Station, there's a lot of outdoor dining down there and there's no chain link. It's all very tasteful.
Okay. I, I've been downtown Seattle and they've had some, several areas going out into the sidewalk. It has a little. Short chain link. Well.
Oh, you mean just the, the little chain temporary? Yeah, that's different. It's sort of a, yeah, temporary little chain barrier, like different from a chain link fence.
That's all the questions I have for that section for Article Five.
There's no more. We, we should probably get moving just because of the hour. Be respectful of people's time.
Yes, uh, building design, so um. The first item here, uh, we asked some questions in the, in the, a member in the workshop, if there's interest in. Not allowing corporate architecture. So uh, by saying architecture that's defined by these corporate identity. Features, most commonly the roofs, whether it's this or it's the IHOP's uh, a big A-frame. Uh, or McDonald's mansion roof, or the Rite Aid had their diamond windows for a while. Um, things that make it hard to, to change the use and not always look like the Pizza Hut. So, and, and folks really didn't want this, so we kept it in and uh. So it, it bans this type of thing. So if you do Pizza Hut, it, it can't just have, it has to be something a little more adaptable. You could still have the, the red and some other things, but it, it, it can't have these major physical features. So that's the first item. Uh, otherwise there's flexibility to do wide variety of, of architecture, provide you meet the massing. The details, standards and the material standards. And I think that's, that's appropriate for Covington. So for building massing. It focuses on a small scaled articulation. So if you look at the, the images on the right. If you have a big building, you try to break up the facade into these articulated pieces. And so we provide the toolbox approach where every um, let's see, I think we say. Every thirty to sixty feet. Uh, depending on the type of building, um, that you can use either window patterns, roof uh. Roofline changes, uh, entries, um, column, building columns. Uh, change of materials or horizontal, vertical modulation to, to break it up. So there's some flexibility in how you can. Accommodate it. And then if you have a really long building, you need to do something more significant to break up the buildings. These are. Really important standards and we, so we've tried to, since these are gonna be reviewed by staff, we've tried to make them. Uh, clear, the standard, the minimum's clear. clear, the standard, the minimum's clear and prescriptive, but integrating some flexibility in how you can do it. And then we've, we've offered some of these departures, too. So there may be cases where, you know, you only want to do two features, but you want to do them really well. And and it might meet the intent. So this building's example, they were just used the window patterns and and the materials for the and the entry break there, where the standards required three. So we try to provide some language of how to help to help negotiate that process and give staff the tools to basically say, no, if it doesn't meet the intent in the standards and showing, and that's by showing examples that helps as well. Building details, so we provide a number of these different toolboxes for details where we say, okay, examples of windows or entries. So we say, do at least one of these features. And here's some examples. So we do that for a number of things, whether it's facade attachments, windows and entries, and I think there's one other, one other one. And we try to use good photographs that kind of fit where Covington wants to go and to be able to show what types of features you need to do to give the development a nice sense of human scale, sense of character, authenticity. And then the windows are really important, too. Because if you do a big building with a lot of the windows like an F, it's just gonna not look good. And what, what the standards here require is that the windows have some recess or projection that creates the shade and shadow and gives the building a sense of depth. And that adds sense of richness to the the environment in the building. So and then we provide some flexibility to that. So we say, I think it's either one and a half inches or two inches, we say that the buildings must be recessed. But we provide an exception that if you do other features that meet it. And so I think, I'm not sure if D is an example that where, you know, it's using the dark frames and different colors. There's different things that you can do to to provide that sense of depth and richness to windows and avoid that flat, flat, undetailed look. But that can really help the character of a building. And then materials, you know, concrete block, metal, the ephes, which is kind of like stucco, and then cement board, which I used on my house here because it's inexpensive and and you could do a lot with it. All those materials are the most common ones used for the the development we might get here today, but need some conditions for their use. So and that's what we've tried to do. So concrete block, we say it must, you can use it, but it must be mixed with other materials and and include textures or colors. So this, Anne had mentioned Old Main and Bellevue, and this is kind of a, one of the classic buildings. It was probably built in the early 90s there, but is is kind of stood the test of time with its with its approach to articulation. And you could kind of see that they use the plain plain concrete block for the columns with some occasional tiles, pretty simple pattern. And then the above the awnings, the split-phase colored concrete blocks. It's simple and it works, but it works great. And it really articulates the facade. And you can see the different awnings here. So metal siding, we've said that you could do metal siding, but must be mixed with other materials. And and to not use metal on the first two floors next to the sidewalk, because it tends to look a little bit more kind of rural, ruralish and and less solid. We have a building like that. So this is a building in Bellingham that I drive by occasionally when I visit my mother-in-law. Good example of kind of mixing in those different materials with metal. You can see the window treatments, by the way, there, too. And then cement board. So this example, the left includes brick, cement. And well, actually, different types of cement board. So the cement board that's in the, that's right here in the maroon. And this in the yellow could also be cement board. Sometimes it's hard to tell. But there's so much you can do with it. What you don't want with cement board is just have the same color and the same texture over a big area. So that's what this standard tries to tries to get away from. And then ephes, this upper floor of this building in Boise here is a good example of using ephes, which is synthetic stucco. Fortunately, it's not being used as much anymore because there's been so many problems in the Northwest with water damage and kind of stains that more people are using cement board because it's much more versatile product these days. But we still allow it. We say no more than 20% of the facade must be trimmed and sheltered. There's still good designs that use it. So so there's that. Trying to go to the next page. And then blank wall standards, we define what a blank wall is and said, well, if you have a blank wall that meets that definition, you need to treat it in one or more of these ways. And so the top photos show good examples of treating those blank walls. Sometimes you just have to have a blank wall, but do something with it and don't don't make it look like C. And D is actually, probably shouldn't be here. That was, I think that's more of like that firewall example. So I'm going to check the standard on that because I'm not sure that should be there. It's a bad example. Although it could be better. And then structured parking, since you're already kind of getting into that environment, it's important to have some standards for that. And we provide some preferences here and how you integrate it. So the, but there's some flexibility, obviously, with that. The first choice is to have it be located below the building or partially below, but that's obviously the most expensive thing. The next choice is doing, having a liner building, which is this here, also called the Texas Donut Approach, where you, where you got parking in the middle and the and the the donut portion or the liner building is the the residential around it. So you're really hiding it. That's in, that that building's in Newcastle. And there's another similar one in Woodenville that turned out really good. So it's being imported from Texas because it's a popular approach there. The third point, the third approach is to have a, an exposed structure, but then you really need to do some treatments on it to make it fit in to the environment. And there's some safety standards, too, for parking entries that we've added there as well. And I think that's, that's it. That's it. So that's kind of an overview. Excuse me. So any questions, comments there? And then I'd also just say that if there were any other written comments and details that you think of later or there's too much to mention in the comment, feel free to send those to staff. And the more detailed you can be, the better.
Anybody have any questions before we move on? Okay. All righty, well, thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate you going through that and giving us some deeper information into it.
Hope it was helpful.
Yeah, very much so. I think we had some good conversation about it tonight, too, which is excellent. Okay. Well, I guess we'll move on then. Maybe let's get back to the other document here. Okay, well, I guess that that takes us to old business, which there is none. And the only person not here, Jonathan has previously requested absence. Do we need to do an attendance vote?
I make a motion that we excuse Jonathan.
Okay. All righty, all in favor, please raise your hands.
Aye.
All righty, it's been moved and seconded and and approved to excuse the absence of Jonathan this evening. And let's see, that will take us into our second public comment period. Ryan, do we have any members of the public that have joined?
No, we do not.
Okay, so I guess with that, we will go ahead and close the second public comment period.